So I just texted the mayor.
Yeah.
And I'll give him a few minutes to reply. I just said, should we wait for you?
Okay.
I think the mayor's coming.
Yeah, he's typically really good about letting me know if he's going to be late, so.
Right.
Yeah, 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 I'll read that.
Just one, and then I have teacher.
It doesn't say we're on air anyway. Oh, and there he is. Oh, on the dot, very nice.
I feel special, I have my own microphone today.
Sorry.
No worries.
Hi, everyone.
We're all in exactly.
We're on the air.
It just came on when you walked in, so.
I'd like to call this Monday, June 17th, School Committee Business Meeting to order Mrs. Yell. Can you take the role, please?
May Ritten.
Here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Kathleen Shaw.
Here.
Juliet Walker. Present. Breonna Higgins. Thompson. Brian Callahan.
Here.
Andrew Bogart.
Present. Great, sorry.
Pledge allegiance.
Yes. Can we rise to the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a land, nation, and a God invisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
All right, we'll begin with public comment. Before we start, just a few reminders. Please keep to topics within the school committee's scope of authority. We encourage civility. Be mindful of the fact that this is a public meeting which is being livestreamed and recorded for all ages in our community. Please be aware that this is not an opportunity for discussion and that you will not receive a response at this time. You have two minutes for your comment. Longer comments can be sent to the school committee email. And Crystal Eldridge, you can come on up to the mic here. So you just need to state your name and address, and then you'll have your two minutes.
My name is Crystal Eldridge. I'm at North Street in Newburyport. Thank you for having me speak with you today. I am here to formally ask and request an investigation into the operations of the superintendent's office, particularly concerning the actions of Deb O'Connor and Sean Gallagher. Over the past two years, there have been repeated violations in multiple IEP and HIPAA regulations, mistreatment of staff, and egregious labor laws within our school district. One of the most concerning issues has been the constant disregard of IEPs resulting in the inadequate support for students with special needs. Despite legal obligations, these violations have persisted, directly impacting the educational and developmental outcome of vulnerable students. Furthermore, there have been disturbing incidences such as lack of licensed teachers in the classroom until the first week of November of 2023. Shockingly, Deb O'Connor was aware of this and instructed Principal Tara Rossi not to inform us until less than 24 hours before the start of the school year. The superintendent's office has repeatedly ignored the principal's request for help over the last year. The lack of transparency in planning is inexcusable and recently has put our children's education and safety at risk. Most recently, Sean Gallagher and Deb O'Connor permitted the dismissal of licensed teachers just four days before the end of school year without notifying the parents. This abrupt decision left children without necessary support outlined in their IEPs, once again failing to meet their educational and developmental needs. As a parent, I've been left scrambling to ensure appropriate care for my child despite repeatedly seeking clarity and receiving inadequate responses. Additionally, the mismanagement of resources has led to an unattainable situation where necessary staffing levels such as two-to-ones and one-on-one supports are not maintained due to financial concerns rather than educational necessities. This has resulted in an unacceptable high turnover rate among teachers and instructional assistants who are forced to work under increasingly difficult conditions without the support they require, such as simple relief for lunch breaks. It is imperative that these systematic.
Yes, Eldridge, if you want to just quick wrap up.
Yeah, I just had like a quick moment. Sorry. It is imperative that these systematic issues within the Newburyport District be addressed promptly and comprehensively. The persistent lack of response and accountability from the superintendent, coupled with the dismissive attitude and legitimate concerns raised by staff and parents, underscores their urgent need for intervention. Therefore, I employ the school committee to launch a thorough investigation into these matters. Our children's rights to education, as guaranteed by law, must not be compromised by administrative negligence or financial mismanagement. It's time for accountability and transparency to ensure brighter future for our students in the district. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter, and I look forward to some resolution to the situation.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a special recognition.
Yeah. All right. Well, as always, we, this is the great part of our school committee, we get to recognize faculty and support staff, along with our students, and tonight is no difference. So first, I'd like to express our deepest gratitude for Deb O'Connor's contributions for the past five years. Deb's decision to come out of retirement and lend her expertise to our district has been a true blessing. The programs she has helped us build during her tenure have not only enriched our educational offerings, but most importantly, have kept our students and families in the Newburyport Public Schools. Under Deb's collaborative leadership, she has helped us build new programming, such as language-based programming, therapeutic programming, strategy-based programming, just to name a few, and has set a high standard for excellence in all of these programs. We're incredibly fortunate to have had the privilege of working with Deb over the past five years. Deb's passion for students is her driving force to come out of retirement and to help Newburyport. Her tireless efforts have significantly contributed to the growth and the success of our district, and for that, we are truly grateful. Although you failed retirement for the first time, we wish you a well-deserved second retirement, knowing that your contribution to Newburyport Public Schools has truly set the foundation for success, which we can contribute, continue to build upon. So at this time, we wish you the very best, and thank you for making a difference in the lives of so many people. All right. Deb O'Connor.
I didn't expect that.
You didn't?
No.
I know, that's why I was surprised. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, will I get a picture?
Yeah.
Oh, lovely.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Awesome. And then as part of, we kind of surprised Deb because she'll be doing that presentation from the special ed tier. That's right, her last, last presentation, but I think as part of the DESI tiered focused monitoring report, which is a very thorough report that Deb will go into some detail for everybody, just shows you the successes of our special education department, so looking forward to hearing from Deb on that. Oh.
Did you want to do a brief recess, or should we just go on?
We can do a brief recess.
Do you want that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we'll take a two-minute recess. Especially since the mayor stepped away.
Yeah.
I told them.
Can we start?
If anyone needs to step out, that's fine, but I think we'll get started again. Yeah, okay. All right, so we're moving on with the consent agenda, and Mr. Callahan, you've got warrants for us?
I do.
Okay.
I moved up the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $322,842.66. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment that are no contest.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first is from the May 20th meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? All right, could I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, then we have a set of minutes from June 3rd. I have a couple of corrections to those minutes, Ms. Yell. I know you didn't make them, so no worries, but, so let me just scroll down here. So the first thing was, in the section for the warrants, it says that I made the motion. I'm sure it was Mr. Callahan. It's always Mr. Callahan unless he's not here, and he was here. So you can just change the name there. And then each time it says absent, it needs to be Andrew Bogart, not Brian Bogart. That happens in a few spots, so just scroll down and make sure you catch all of those. And then if you go down to, so I guess this is the second page of the minutes, do you see the header communications? There's SISL, and then communications.
Oh, the subcommittee, yes.
Yeah, yeah, under the subcommittees.
Yes.
It says Sarah, without an H, unfortunately, so I'd like it to just be corrected, so it says Sarah Hall there. And that's all I had. Did anyone else have anything? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the June 3rd minutes?
So moved. With, as amended.
Thank you. Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all set, Ms. Yell? Okay, thank you. And Lizzie, we're ready for your student representative report.
All right, we got a pretty short one today, so just go through it quick. All right, in Mullen News, Survivor Day was a success. Thank you to all the volunteers. And Mrs. Cusser's fifth grade class won the PBIS Kickball Championship. In NHS News, AP Environmental students wrapped up their stewardship projects. Students built and installed four Finch birdhouses on campus, planted a sugar maple on High Street, and worked with elementary students on recycling and endangered species. For the sugar maple tree, the students that participated were Finn and Silas Brennan, Josh Lucy, Casey Gueranger, and Connor McGovern. And for the birdhouses, it was Finn McNeil, Jackson Patton, JT Hench, and Will Martalucci. That's it.
Well, thank you. Okay. Next, we have the Integrated Arts Video Lab update.
Yeah.
Which I'm very excited about.
Yeah, so we, as you all know, part of the memos that I've been sending out since the summer, the original feasibility study was the downstairs area, which was sponsored by the NEF, and Mr. Callahan is our NEF rep also, which was a bigger project. And then working with the NEF, we decided to tackle on a smaller piece of that project, so we're excited to be moving forward with the partnership, the NEF, and we hope down the road that this is just the first phase of many phases of the project. But Phase 1 right now is to redesign the video lab art space. This lab will be on the first floor of NHS. As you take a left heading towards the cafeteria, that's where the video lab will be. And presently, we have a feasibility study working with the architects just right for that lab only. So Mr. McSweeney, Mr. Antonelli, Mr. Galan, Stephanie Phillips, who's a key contributor to the video lab, also a fantastic performing arts teacher. Lisa Furlong and I currently have in bi-weekly meetings with Harriman Architecture Firm to finalize the room requirements. So Ms. Phillips has been instrumental in ensuring that this space supports the instructional changes that we've been working on for the past couple of years. For example, this space is going to allow students in other classes to drop in during the day. This is important as we expand our multimedia projects across the curriculum. Also, if you recall, the NEF has funded over the past couple of years the technology upgrades for this space, so they've already invested in the upgrading of the multimedia center. Also, this summer, a group of English teachers for the curriculum planning will be working with Stephanie on reimagining the senior project called Book to Film. So students are working on this project with other teachers, and will be able to find space in the new lab to continue that work. In addition, NHS English elective journalism course and the arts broadcast news course will be reimagined as a co-talk class, and then this space will provide a studio where students can work collaboratively on their research, writing, reporting, editing, and creative multimedia projects. It also ties in to the NEF's investment of the podcast device. Actually, it's a studio that they purchased for the Knox Middle School regarding multimedia projects, so we're really excited once again to partner with the NEF to enhance the video capabilities and the multimedia capabilities for the school. So that's where we're at. This August, we'll have a much better idea of the scope of the project. We'll have designs that I plan on sharing with school committee. So right now, it's really the planning phase of what that's going to look like, and that's where we're at.
So what's the timeframe to get it up and running? Are we talking for longer?
So we're looking, so it's probably going to be more like October or November. They're working on the feasibility study, working out the details of what the lab's going to look like, the upgrades of the technology, and then from there, this August, we'll have a better understanding of what the cost is going to be, including the contribution with the NEF, so.
Okay, other questions, Ms. Locker?
Yeah, is the feasibility study going to have a deliverable at the end? Are we going to be able to see the final deliverable?
Yes.
When would we be able to see that?
Well, they're working on having like the 3D designs now, so I would say probably for our August retreat would be whatever really, I think, a good understanding of where we're at.
Okay, I guess I'm thinking like an actual report that, you know, people who are interested in finding more about the project and its scope could look at.
Yeah.
Including us.
Yeah, of course. So I think that that's, right now, we're in the planning phase, so once we have more details, obviously, we'll report out to the school committee, but I'm sure on the website we can post updates.
Yeah, I think anything you can provide in writing or in visuals would be useful, so it's not just verbal reports.
Correct. Well, right, right now, we don't have.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I understand. I just, eventually, it would be great to have that kind of stuff.
Absolutely, 100%. And that's the other piece, too, working with the NEF, is as they going out to get donors, they're going to need something that the donors can see. So that's kind of the work we're doing right now, so.
So would this be funded exclusively by the NEF, or are we going to be?
Well, we've already, we've already done in-kind contributions in the sense that Steve Berkholm and our custodial staff, along with the maintenance staff, has been doing like moving as much as we can do on our own with our current staff, so the majority of the funding will be the NEF, though.
Okay. Were there other questions?
Is there an estimated timeframe on the back end after October event?
Yeah, so we're hoping, it all depends, I guess, you know, it's going to go out for bid and all of that type of stuff, so we're anticipating by October and November, we should have the bidding process done, and then the planning of what work would need to get done, and then the timing of that, so. We're hoping, you know, by the winter break, hopefully, you know, to have, that would be like, I guess, a picture-perfect, if we could have a whole new video lab by January of next year, would be great.
So those, the classes that will be impacted, they'll still be offered in the fall, and then maybe the newer version of these courses could happen second semester?
Stephanie, if we all know, Stephanie Phillips is just an amazing teacher, so she already has a lot of the new video equipment that the NEF has purchased, so she's working in the basement. But right now, when you reimagine, remodel the space that we're talking about, it will be like the state-of-the-art. So bring that technology, it's sort of been purchased in that space, but really renovating that entire space, so it'll almost look exactly like a studio. And then once we have the visual and some of the pictures of what it's going to look like, we'll make sure we get that out, you know, not wait till August, but school committee would see that, and then we can do a posting on the website of the progress.
Cool. Anyone else? Lizzie, any questions, comments?
Where are the students from that classroom going to go?
IDC students are being relocated on the second floor. So that was part of the work that we have done, Steve and the crew, is to make sure we outfit our IDC program on the second floor, which really ties into them being more inclusive, too. So it's one of those programs. So it's like a win-win for everyone. And what's really nice about the video lab, it's going to be, as you're walking towards the cafeteria, it's going to be right off of or pretty close to where the auditorium is and the classes are ready, so it's just going to tie in nicely for the performing arts.
Great. Thank you. Good question. I think we're ready to move on, then. Do you want, do you want to introduce the DESI coordinated review?
Yeah, I'll have, you know, Ms. O'Connor can come on up, but I just also want to thank, and I think you're going to cover this, too, Ms. O'Connor, it's probably of all the DESI tiered focused monitoring, one of the most comprehensive visits and reports. It probably takes about six months of preparation, and then the team comes out for a week. DESI team, they go through a lot of year documentation, so I just wanted to take a moment and thank our entire special education department across the entire district, because everyone from all of the programs, all of the teachers, were impacted in supporting this review by the state, so job well done by the entire faculty and support staff.
They were, Karen?
Yes, they did, so.
I want this technology.
You stay one more year, we'll put you in the new video lab.
How do I get this to work, please? Oh, okay. I was pressing wrong, thank you. Okay, so we went through the tiered focus monitoring, and this year, it actually began last year with a start doing a self-assessment, and there's many, many, many steps to it, and it culminates in an onsite visit, okay? So I'm just going to go through the whole process with you so you can see, how come that didn't show up? There we go. Okay. Listen, I started with an Apple IIe, and I had to have my students come and help me with my floppy disk, so I've come a long way. So it actually starts with a district training where they come out from DESI and they train the administration on what elements they're going to be looking at, what standards they're going to be looking at, and the process that they're going to be going through. So that's how it begins. Then what the district does is they conduct a self-assessment, and then they report to DESI. So that's pretty much what I was doing all summer long, was I was doing a self-assessment. They had me pulling folders and files and looking through things to determine myself what areas we needed to work on, so that when they came, they would look at those things and make sure that we had corrected whatever I found. So the summer was really spent doing that. And then they actually give you a variety of things that you have to submit on the Mass DESI site, and that's how you communicate with, they give you a representative from DESI, and they prepare for the onsite visit. And then we receive a report, and I was extremely nervous to even open up that report when it came, so let me talk a little bit about the different phases. Okay, so the self-assessment is when we are looking at all our special education and all our civil rights documentations, and there's a variety of elements, I believe there's like 45 or so elements that we have to follow. We are required to take a sample of student records, and it could be high school, they tell you what categories to look at, and you have to go through it, go back years determining, has everything been followed, are you in compliance, what do the assessments look like, what did the IEP services look like, that whole thing. And then upon completion of those two reviews, the district submits this self-assessment with evidence to the state, and that's how they determine what the next step of the situation is. So then we have an onsite visit. So they review all the records for special education. So they take a sample, it's, I can't tell them who to take or what to take. They come in and they take a sample. They want to see preschoolers, they want to see out of district, they want to see high school, they want to see postgraduate, and they grab, they also grab the folders of the ones that you did as a self-assessment. I didn't know that was going to happen, but it did this year, so, and they look and make sure that you have, in fact, corrected anything that you had found in your own self-assessment. And they're, they're usually there for a couple of days, I want to say it was about a day and a half, is that right, Sean? About a day and a half for the onsite. Again, they ask for certain documents around civil rights, like the handbooks, the student handbooks, the policies that we have around special education and around civil rights and around equity, so those are the kinds of things they were looking at. They also survey the parents of students with disabilities, so all parents, we provide the list of parents, and they send out to all parents, and if a child, if a parent has three or four children, they'll get three or four surveys, so they can actually answer it. So they can actually answer it differently depending on their, their student in special education. And they look at what their experiences are, how they feel about the programming, the teachers, related services, have they, you know, IEPs, did they get them in a timely manner? Did they have good testing? Those kinds of questions. And that's in the survey with parents. And then they go over it with the, me, the district. Then they interview staff. And again, they're looking again at the same criteria. So when they came into our district, they interviewed some teachers, related service providers. And what I mean by that is like OT speech, PT, BCBA, the team facilitators, the principals, a CPAC parent and administration. So I believe they interview Shawna, they interview me. And when they interviewed the parent advisory council, there was a parent that stepped up. We asked in our group meeting, is anybody interested in meeting with the state? And when parent said yes, and so she went and met with them. They also look at observations of classrooms and facilities. They want to make sure that our kids, another reason to have the IDC upstairs with all the other kids, it's all about, it's all about inclusion, it's all about the students having access. And they're now doing a new IEP. There's a new IEP finally out. And that is the main focus of the new IEP is about student voice first and student access, whether it's to the school, whether it's to the curriculum, but it doesn't have to be just curriculum. It could be access to the school. So that's what they're looking at when they come in. So these were all the legal standards that we had to answer to. It's a, it's quite a, quite an experience. So they look at our assessments and our evaluations. They look at our determinations for specific learning disabilities. The reason for that is because the state was over-identifying kids with learning disabilities and they were really taking issue with that. So now we have to answer a variety of questions to ensure that, that they really, we meet the standards of the, the whole country when it comes to our learning disabilities. We have special requirements when students are on the autism spectrum, so we need to talk about those. They look at all our transition services. Starting at the age of 16, we start having conversations about, you know, what the kids could do. And it's all kids, whether they go to college or whether they want to go into the military, it's all our specialized kiddos are looked at. They look at our timelines, making sure that we, you know, do a 30 days, we, from the time the parent signs consent for testing, we get the 30 days, the testing in, and then we have 45 school days to have a meeting. And so they look at all our timelines. They look at our independent evaluations, people who go out for evaluations, reevaluations. So every three years, we need to do a full evaluation and determine eligibility. So they look at that. They look at our progress reports and make sure that our content matches our goals and objectives. Early initiation of EI and transition processes, since we work with EI, they look at all our related services, orientation and mobility, making sure that the social workers are consulting with the parents. So they look at the agendas and things like that. IEP development and content. They check our bullying and harassment statements, our extended evals. They make sure that we are following LRE, which is the least restrictive placement and kids aren't just being put into programs. They, we're very thoughtful and that everybody's individualized. Again, all these things are just part of special education. Assistive technology is something they look at, are we providing interpreters? Like DARI is really hard for us to find interpreters, but we have. But are we providing interpreters at all our team meetings for parents who don't speak English as their first language? They look and see how much we're spending in specialized materials and equipment and are we up to date in making sure that it's the most recent? They look at our special education out of district placements, how we do child find. Child find is, we are, it is incumbent on us, anybody in the city, if they go to the IC or wherever they go, for us to actually test and determine eligibility for all children in Newburyport. So child find's important. It's really important at the preschool level. They look at our instructional groupings and our age span requirements. They look at all the behavioral supports and interventions and make sure that we provide equal opportunities, that kids have transportation, that they are allowed to go to school-sponsored events, they're able to be on the track team if they want. I mean, we, we will provide supports for those students when they do that. The civil rights criteria is looking at the occupational vocational opportunities that we provide for kids, our academic counseling in the general curriculum. They look at our materials free from bias and stereotype. They look at our district curriculum accommodation plan. I have seen a lot of decaps. Newburyport has a really good decap. It was one of the first things I had shared with Shaw when I, when I saw that. They look at our process around early literacy, what we do for home and hospital, and then instructional support in coordination with the building principal. So how the building principal is part of the whole process. Then they send a draft report and they tell you it's, it's online and you get a little nervous. And I actually made Elise come and open it with me. I was like, oh, no, 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 please. And we were very relieved. The only area that we were cited in was one area and it was instructional grouping. Again, a few of the academic support classes at the high school were bigger than their criteria. They have a certain criteria, how many special ed students you could have in a room, then you have to add an IA and et cetera, et cetera. That was all around a staffing issue. And I believe the high school just didn't have a mechanism to track it well. And so DESI said to me, you need to come up with a corrective action plan. So I created a corrective action plan. And the corrective action plan was actually the director of guidance, Andy, and myself developed it. And what we are going to do is we're going to train the staff at the beginning of September, telling them what the, what the guidelines are for, for requirements. So that people, if they notice, they'll let us know if there's a problem. But the team chair and the director of guidance are now going to, every two weeks, make sure they're going to keep this Google sheet. And every two weeks, they're going to make sure that they monitor it so that if they ever get over the age, the groupings, that they can address it immediately. So those are all the classes that have special ed kids in it. And we're going to put the teachers and every two weeks, they'll add numbers and make sure they have the right number of students, to the right number of licensed teachers, to the right number of pairs. And if there is a discrepancy, they can, you know, justify it and then go and see what they can do to fix it. So that has been accepted only verbally by our representative, but he, he liked it. He said it, it looked good. So we're, we're hoping it will, it will, you know, fly with them. But I have to say, I was very pleased that it was just one area. I mean, and that's kudos to, one of the reasons why I have stayed here is because you guys have amazing teachers and amazing kids and everybody works so hard. And it's, it's hard out there today. We know that, we all know that. And, and people are quick to, to, you know, make teachers feel like they're responsible and teachers take it so personally. And, and I have to say, they, they have a lot of resilience, they have a lot of gumption, they keep coming back. You know, I find myself sometimes running up to a classroom and saying, are you okay? Thank you, thank you. And, and I'm like so pleased when they actually come back the next day. And so that has been my pleasure, is the fact that there are awesome families. I've met more kids, I, I'm just, you know, kids are my north star. And I've really enjoyed working with a lot of the staff. This is a great staff and they were so willing to jump on board when we said, let's go language based, let's do this, let's do that. I, you know, people are offering their time outside of, you know, their workday and they're willing to do whatever. I get, I get emails at night, I get emails all weekend long. And it's mostly staff really, really, you know, working hard. And that's the reason why, you know, I put it all together, but they are responsible for the fact that it came out well. Any questions?
Do we have any questions?
No, I just, once again, just want to thank Deb for, you know, her leadership coming in. Remember, originally it was for six months, three days a week, right?
Then we had a shutdown.
We had COVID.
Then we had a shutdown.
Then you've been with us for five years, multiple roles, you know, and I just, once again, truly appreciate that. And I think this one example of, you know, just looking at our budget and when we talk about staff, you know, staff increases, this would be an example of, you know, during a school year, if all of a sudden, it's supposed to be 10 students per one teacher, and then if those students needed more academic lab, throw, and you go up to 14 or 15, this is when during the school year, you might have to hire. And that goes back to those state and federal mandates. So we're mandated to have a certain ratio in different special education programs. So, but of all, and the full report, this is, the, the full report from DESI will be published.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the preliminary.
It's not published. This is what I, you know, I have like a draft.
Correct. So the, so that will be the, the full report will be published. And once that's published, then, you know, we'll utilize, give the link to the parents. It's a very thorough report. And as Deb said, of all of the reports that DESI does, and when they come into a district, they really need to make sure people are compliant with students with disabilities and also compliance with civil rights. So it's not a, you know, hey, this is, we did our self-report, you know, check the box. This is, all right, well, here's your self-report. Now we're going to do the real audit to make sure what you're saying is, is true. So, once again, I just want to thank, thank Deb for, for all her work. And I think she's setting up our new director, Mr. Brooks, in a good place.
We met today, we talked today and I've, you know, guaranteed him that when I get back from vacation, we'll, we'll sit down, we'll talk some more. We're sharing lots of Google sheets and Google documents and I'm learning, right, Lisa? So thank you, everybody. Thank you for letting me be a part of your district. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a, I think we have a question here.
Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
Did you have a question as well?
That's okay. I'm sorry.
I just had a follow-up. When is, how often do these audits happen?
There, every six years is the full audit and every three is the mid, the mid. When I left Beverly, I said to myself, I will never do an audit again. That was at my retirement party. I came back, I did an audit.
Okay. Thanks.
So this is the full six-year cycle?
Yes. This is the big cycle.
That's great. Thank you for sharing all that. It sounds like a very positive report and it clearly came at a lot of time and work on your behalf with your staff as well. I'm just curious, it sounds like there were very few sort of suggested corrective actions. Was there anything in the process that surprised you, either in the process or in the results at the end? And then the follow-up question was, thank you for mentioning, mentioning the meetings with Dr. or Mr. Brooks. That's excellent that you're doing that and continue to do that. I'm, I'm just curious if there's specific areas that, I don't want to use the word unfinished, but having put so much into the district, I'm wondering if there's certain things that you would have liked to have seen happen that maybe are still happening and that you're going to be saying to him, you know, this is a real area that is a growth area or area we can focus on and improve in, or it's going well and continue to go in that direction, that kind of thing.
I am a real fan of vertical alignment as well as horizontal alignment. And I, I love when we, when we see the programs and we see everything. So we see what happens at Bres, happened at Bolin and happened at the high school. So because there's a new IEP also coming September in 2024, I've had to train all the staff on, on the new IEP. So we've got some volunteers that are coaches at the different levels and they're working on kind of uniform forms and uniform procedures so that everybody is doing the same thing, especially since you're going to have three team chairs and then you've got your two program supervisors. And Brad, he'll be doing some, too. So, you know, you want to make sure that everything's really uniformed and vertically aligned. I love the fact that the language base is growing. We're now from second grade to like 11s, I believe. So that, that's huge. And you wouldn't really want to start them before, before second grade anyway, so that's huge. But when I met with Andy the other day, when we were looking at reading staff, and this was a really interesting moment for me, he said, you know what, I feel like we need less reading than we used to. And I said, that's a good thing. That's because we're doing what we need to do at the elementary level. And so he's been feeling like, there's a lot of reading services at the high school. He's not feeling that now. So that, if I was to be here, that is the kind of thing I would do. I'd love to see more technology. The bomb bot that we did with the IDC kids, it was such an awesome experience for those kids. And I would just love to see more opportunities like that, you know, going forward so that they can continue to kind of utilize technology. There's a lot of AI technology around neurodiversity now. And I think that that's something that's going to probably take hold soon and work with our language-based people with. But having landmark and having OG come in is a really important thing because our staff is really, there will be 17 people soon, OG trained, which is huge. I tell my other colleagues, and I still have a lot of relationships, and they're like, wow, wow. So I, that's, that's kudos to Newburyport, that they've been able to, to train that many people. And now we have one teacher who's willing to put in four years to become a fellow. And that means, and then she can train everybody in the district and you no longer will need to invest the money outside of the district. So those are the kinds of, those are the kind, those are the kind of things that turn me on. What can I say? Trying to think, anything else that I think?
Well, the CPAC. I can't really see you, Deb, I'd say.
Oh, CPAC.
We really, we really want to rebuild our CPAC. It's a long time coming at this point.
That, yeah, that breaks my heart and we need to, we need to build it. And it's not a struggle that other districts don't have. It really isn't. And probably the other thing that we really have a little bit of a challenge with, although I think we have less here in Newburyport than in some districts, is staffing right now. A lot of young, I mean, I was teaching when, before I came and started helping out with Shawna, actually, I was here with a student and I decided to say hello to Mr. Gallagher. So I was following student teachers. And they're not producing them. They're not producing, the, the school that I was working for, they had one special ed teacher get his master's degree. I couldn't believe it this year, just one. I probably, before COVID, had 30 candidates. So, and so it is, staffing's hard. And it's, it's a challenge. It's, it's, it's a challenge and I think that, you know, eventually it'll turn around, but I, that I would work on, too. And I think like the idea of like having the daycare, it's a great idea because then it, it makes people want to stay in Newburyport. I would work on that, too, if I was going to stick around. That would be another thing. Enough shared, it's always with Brad.
Any other questions? That's great. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Deb.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be part of it.
Thanks, Deb. Appreciate it.
So in your packet, you'll see a revised school committee meetings schedule. It's revised as I recommended. So the summer retreat is now scheduled for the 19th. And I'm sorry that that doesn't work for you, Ms. Shaw. We'll, we'll work on some sort of independent study project for you. It's going to be great.
I mean, I might be able to.
We can be in touch about that.
Zoom in.
But this, overall, this seems to be the best plan. And so that change was made and I would like to make a motion that we accept this and I would like to make a motion that we accept this new meeting schedule as revised in the packet. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. I think we have a few subcommittee updates, starting with FinCom, Mr. Callahan?
Yes, thank you. FinCom met on Thursday, the 13th. We went over a whole bunch of minutes, bus contract, we had a brief update. Some of the things talked about were relevant to the executive session. The contract has been signed, so we just have to hardly wait for the start, right?
Yep, move forward.
So does that start July 1, or does it wait till first day of school?
First day, yeah.
So do you know, actually, if, they've never done the routes before, when are you going to have the routes all settled, do you think, and then make sure that their drivers know what they are?
Yeah, so the, I think one of the benefits as we were working with the new company is they are very familiar with the Newburyport routes. It's people that used to work for the previous company that have already done the routes for Newburyport. So I think that will be going on, you know, pretty soon. So it's not going to be a heavy lift for this new bid company that we have.
New deals that are going to have the GPS running, right?
I believe they have the GPS, yeah, the new buses.
Phil, GPS?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes, GPS on the new buses, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're going to contract.
Yeah.
Okay, so we talked about that, we went over fiscal year, 24 budget transfers. Previously, the Phil position would give us regular like notices of transfers, we don't have to do it until a certain amount, but he said that starting, I guess our next meeting probably, we'll start getting all the transfer notices. We probably won't ever bring them to the full committee unless people want to see them, like during this report, but there's nothing to vote on. But they can go, they can get sent out in the packet if people want that. That was that. Class 24 account, I specifically asked for this graduating class's account so we can see what's happening, because we always hear, "This is what happens." We fundraise throughout the year, and the money goes to pay for X. So I wanted to see what happened with that money. So it's not, it wasn't quite finished, because there are other bills coming in, like for the prom and things. And Phil said that within two weeks, he's going to get us the actual written-down definitive policy of what happens with the money five years from now, and who gets access to that account at the bank, and how that works.
Okay.
Because in six years, I've heard a bunch of different versions of that same story, so.
Well, we have a policy about student activity accounts that we just recently adopted.
Sure, yep.
That indicates we're going to be doing audits on an annual basis.
Yep, yep.
So that, did you guys talk about when that will be done and when you're going to be hearing?
Uh, no, I guess I think that would be a general discussion when we can decide what time of year to do that, right? September, January, July, whatever.
I mean, I would defer to the business manager and the FinCom.
Okay, all right, so we can put that on the agenda for next time to decide that.
Madam Chair, if I could just, speaking about what you bring to us as a full committee, I do think if you can provide copies of the transfers, I would love to see more financial information in our packets, even if you're not specifically reporting out or voting on them, particularly when we're delegating those kind of things to the FinCom instead of having it come to the full school committee.
Yeah, it can come out in every packet, so the...
That'd be great.
The next meeting after that meeting, right? So yeah, but we'll find out, well, actually, it will happen now with that, five years from now, who gets to go to the bank and withdraw the cash, right? So there's that. Fundraising report, you know, we still, Ms. Walker primarily did the report about the fundraising study we did. We don't really have a resolution of what we're going to do, what we're going to recommend necessarily with all that information. But one thing that came up in that conversation because of the report was that the athletic department's policy provided in the previous packet said that all end-of-year banquets are held in the school or on the field or court of, you know, the sport. And tonight, I believe, is boys lacrosse at the Elks. So my question was, you know, it was theorized that, well, maybe it's not school-related, but if it's being paid for with funds that were raised during the school year for the thing they get a permission slip from, from the principal and so on and so forth, then yes, it's school, it's definitely school-associated. So, you know, I just, my question is, I don't know how that's a thing in the AD's department, but the coaches aren't told to do it and follow it, so that's, you know, that's that.
I think we talked at the last meeting about the fundraising advisory committee having a, the chair, the two of us having a follow-up conversation with superintendent and identifying some of those action items. So maybe we can do that either over the summer or early, early next year.
Yep.
And I was aware of the issue about the banquet communication, and I think that we may want to consider a school committee policy related to off-site. We might want to discuss off-site activities and events and having a policy so that the AD has something to fall back on versus just relying on their own internal policies. And so we can talk about that at a future policy subcommittee meeting and maybe bring some kind of recommendation forward.
Is there room for any of that stuff at the retreat, or do you have that agenda fully?
No, I'm open to suggestions. I'm still making a list, and it'll, you know, I think as long as you get to me by mid-July...
How about right now?
That would be, yeah, I'll make a note.
That'd be great, and I'll talk to you about specifics.
Fundraising policy in general, or just that specific thing that you mentioned?
Ms. Walker and I can speak to the superintendent, and the weeks before that happens, we can sort out what the action items are going to be, and we'll discuss them during that meeting.
Sounds good.
Right? Other business, we reviewed the city council budget hearing and what happened at, and that's really kind of about it.
Thank you. Policy subcommittee, did you meet?
We had a very productive meeting, and I really appreciate Ms. Keely and fellow member Ms. Shaw, because we, I didn't think we were going to get through much, but we did. And so unfortunately, the timing wasn't quite right, because we're not meeting the rest of the summer as a subcommittee, but we will have some first readings for potentially the first regular business meeting in August, although that, I have a conflict with, anyway, we'll figure it out. But we'll have something ready to go in September with some of the fine-tuning. I think specifically resolving the field use and facility use policy that we all were confused about. We got that figured out and a few other things, so we'll bring some stuff forward for the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Communications, we haven't met, right?
No, that was several weeks back, but I might have missed the opportunity to report back on that.
That's right, I think we did it. So if there's anything you want to say about communications?
If you covered, that's fine, and four of the six of us were theirs.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that the biggest takeaway was the cadence of the meetings that we're hoping to have with the city council, so that we can extrapolate and expand on Mr. Callahan's, what ultimately was like a 30 and 45-minute meeting into a more cohesive collaborative interaction with the city council, and it was nice to have the city council president Cameron there. I think that was productive and bodes well for the future, but clearly also demonstrated that there's plenty to iron out more time.
Yep, we've got our work cut out for us, so definitely put some of that communications work on our summer retreat to look at how we can make some improvements next year. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. Just wrapping up, just a few items, activities the last week or so wrapping up the school year. I'm not sure, we had, we opened up, on the 6th of June, we had the student-led conferences showcased at the middle school. I just want to thank Mr. Shoga, Mr. Marcos for all of their work for the student-led conferences, and also Jen Groskin and Mr. Rico. I think every year we're doing this student-led conferences, it's getting better and better. And today's eighth-grade move-up day, a lot of the students reflected back on that in their speeches. So student voice is getting stronger throughout the district, and the middle school has been one to really credit. We had a favorite poem project, which we had Sunday on the 9th. I got to read a poem, and Ms. Hall, Ms. Boger, and the mayor were also part of that, so next year, Mr. Callahan, we'd love to have you.
I told Deb Sabo that I would do it next year.
All right. You might be better at poetry slam for you, I think, you know, maybe not the community ones. No, but it's a great event, and if you have time, you know, they would love to have us all there too, so it was just really nice. And the students, Ms. Sabo and our students showcasing their talents, just amazing, and that's another piece of the NEF, another activity that they sponsor is Poetry Soup in Ms. Sabo's class. Our ed awards, NEF ed awards was on the 11th, which was another great night for all of us. Many of the school community members were also there in attendance, and then we got to recognize our retirees, and that's always a nice way to end the year, and the Poetry Soup students performed at that too. What was really nice is our English language learning family breakfast, so this was kind of at the end of the year to bring our El families together and then provide like information on our summer school and literacy camps and activities for the families. So I got to thank them and for all of their hard work as parents, and it was just, it was really nice. You know, we said to take advantage of the summer camps, it's a win for, you know, for us, as we can continue to educate your children and you get the mornings off. So it's always good for a parent to have that. And then that same day on the 12th, I got to see our AP history group projects. I was invited to that, some unbelievable creative thinkers, and allowing the students to kind of show what they have learned, and that was a lot of fun. Today, closing, the eighth-grade move-up day, and the students' speakers were just inspiring and just really, really awesome, and we were there today.
They were really good, yeah.
Yeah, they were really, really impressive. Tomorrow, we have the Mullen Awards, which is another great tradition in Newburyport, where the teachers nominate each other for like, almost like a teacher of the year at the Mullen Award. So it's strictly run by our faculty, which is a wonderful way to kick off the summer and to close out the year. Juneteenth, as we all know, is this Wednesday, so I'll be in attendance. I don't think I'm speaking, so, but I will be there. I think many of all of us as a community, it's something that's, you know, really important to support, so looking forward to that. And then just some housekeeping items. I just want to credit Mr. McSweeney. We had the opportunity to present at the budget and finance on the capital projects, and this was Mr. McSweeney's first presentation in front of city council. He did an extraordinary job. He's, you know, well-versed, he created his own PowerPoint highlighting different aspects of some of the needs of the district, so he did a wonderful job. The, I want to credit Ms. Furlong, Ms. Papajoris, Jim Antonelli, for really putting together the Greenlight Grant that we were talking about, that's a COPS grant and the security. It was probably the hottest, and Dr. Papajoris, who's a retired assistant superintendent, who's a great grant writer, she says this was probably one of the hottest grants that, you know, she had to write, it was convoluted, but we did all the work, we put all the details, the narrative to the budget pages, and that was successfully submitted. So we'll know in September on that Greenlights Grant, we potentially, it could be for us up to $500,000, so we got our fingers crossed on that. That will be a great offset of all those security upgrades that we've done for our school. And just to credit the district attorney, Paul Tucker, we had a meeting with him, he gave a great letter of support, so he's been, his office has been really helpful too. And then, as we were talking about, we have bi-weekly meetings with the Hermann Architects, and the closer we get to see you all can see something or a visual, that 3D piece, once we have that, we'll send that out. And then we're hoping, as we said, July and August, we'll have a good understanding of what that's going to look like, what the cost is going to be, and how much the NEF will be contributing, so. But some great things, and I just want to thank you all, it's for a great year. This is our last meeting for a few weeks anyways, I'm sure I'll be talking to all of you throughout the summer. But I just want to thank you all for your support, for the students and the families. As Deb said, it's always good to have people from the outside with a lot of experience that really understand the special place that we have here, and this community, I think, puts the kids and the families first, and that's what makes this a real special place, so thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent?
I'd rather comment. When they originally came up with the eighth grade, the students would do their own assessment, basically. I was like, "Ah, no, that seems crazy," but it was awesome. So I went to my own kids, and, you know, you know your kids, live with them, talk them all the time, but all the kids in that room, because you could hear each thing, then you listen to your own child, then you would go to the other kid's table, and it was amazing. And a ton of those kids wrote letters to the editor to the Daily News.
Really good ones, yeah.
I mean, it's amazing, I can't imagine being 13 or 14 years old and one even knowing what that means, you're writing a letter to the editor.
Right.
But they were great, these kids got their names in the paper for something they're really passionate about.
All right. Yeah, and I think that what's, you know, going back to Deb's point, what's amazing with our faculty and administration is from the first one we did, we received a lot of parent feedback on how to make improvements. So now where, where this is the, you know, third year, but I agree, and when, it talks all about when students are showing parents their, you know, their work, they have ownership of that, and they're really invested in that. And then it's great, because then students and parents and guardians are partnering with academic goals together, which I think is truly, truly nice, especially as parents sitting down and having, you know, your child go through that. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you. Do we have any new business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'll move and go Celtics.
Oh, I thought you were motioning.
Move and go Celtics.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can sign that, you don't have to.
The vendor's not here.